Hello. Is this on? Hello, excuse me. If you all could grab your cups of coffee and take a seat, we'll get this event started. So, thank you so much for being here this morning. My name is Elizabeth Cromwell, and I'm the President and CEO of the Frederick County Chamber of Commerce. And I'm delighted to see so many people today. I hear this is a larger turnout than we've had in some time. So, thank you all for being here. And at the Chamber, it's important for us to help connect the business community with our elected officials and the greater Frederick community at large. So, I think how we're going to do this today is I will introduce the Mayor. And then we have a couple of questions to kind of kick off the conversation. And then, I know that they would all like to hear from you. And we would like to get your questions. And we'll wrap up around nine o'clock, so we can get everybody out before the meter maids show up. So, parking enforcement agency who do a great job. So, I-
I was going to say that we won't get parking enforcement.
Excellent, excellent, all right. Well, thank you for that. So, it's my pleasure to introduce Mayor McClement. And I also do want to let you know that the President of the Chamber Board, Josh Bokey, who is also on the Board of Aldermen, could not be here today, so he sends his regrets. So, with that, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Welcome, everyone. And we're going to talk very slow, so the parking enforcement people can- No. Thank you all very much for attending today. We always look forward to the opportunity where when we can have the opportunity to talk to you one-on-one in a casual setting, to talk to our members of our business community, to see what their thoughts and concerns and joys are. That's why I like this event, because it's always very informal, not a presentation or anything. This is our opportunity to have a two-way conversation. Just to, for those who don't know, introduce everybody. Alderman Russell, Alderman O'Connor, Alderwoman Kazemchak, Alderman Dacey. Also with us today, we do have some staff, in case there's some detailed questions you have, we can hopefully help answer. We have Zach Kirschner, who's our Director of Public Works. We have Richard Griffin, who is our Director of Economic Development. We have Bobby Baumler, with our Office of Economic Development. And we have Nikki Biamonte, who is the Executive Assistant to the Mayor. So, again, I think the opportunity is for us to have a conversation. And so, I'll turn it back over to Elizabeth. But thank you all very much for coming out today.
Great. Well, thank you so much. And I think probably we should start with a big, broad question that will let some of you maybe expand upon some of your goals. So, would you like to share with us, what is your overarching goal to accomplish over the next year?
No snow. Next question. Just my personal one is, you know, I always have said that this town has great character. And I think it's made up, that character's made up of its residents, its business members, and its visitors. I think we thrive because of that character. And, you know, any way that I can find to enhance and maintain and enhance that attribute that we have comes in different forms. Comes with, you know, a strong infrastructure, comes with a strong business base, comes with people who want to actually, you know, live here, people who want to visit here through tourism. Just ways to continue to find that, to make that happen. You know, it's not as easy as it's easy to say, harder to do. But that's from me.
Okay. Good morning, everybody. Thanks for being here. I'm my second cup, so I should be awake here shortly. A few things that I'm interested in working on this year, first of all, is a complete streets policy. A complete streets policy, if you don't know what that is, means that roads are built to accommodate all modes of transportation, be it walking, biking, wheelchairs, strollers, you name it. Roads should be built to accommodate all mode of transportation. The city is very close to passing the policy. The next thing that will come along with that will be to build the framework, essentially the regulatory framework that goes along with that, so that we can ensure that that happens in the future. So, I'm very excited about that. We also are working on a sustainability master plan, something that we had hoped to have for many, many years. We hired a manager of sustainability last year, and she's been working diligently to get all of the pieces together. It's a big, big undertaking, but it will address such things as energy consumption by the city, our petroleum policies in terms of, you know, vehicles, and hopefully getting more hybrids and perhaps even electric vehicles into our fleet, a whole plethora of things. And then, another thing that I'm working on is a committee to develop a watershed management plan. The city owns hundreds and hundreds of acres up in the mountains that are not within the corporate limits of the city, but belong to the city. And over the last 20 or 30 years, those lands which provide clean water, it's one of our largest water source areas, has been degraded through rogue trail building, through, there have been booby traps set up there. There's just been a lot of activity, and it hasn't really been managed over time. And so, we're pulling, we're pulling together a group of people, environmentalists, cyclists, horseback riders, hikers, hunters. We're all pulling together to create this watershed management plan that will have also to a recreational component, so we can ensure that people can enjoy the watershed, that they're not damaging it and risking our water source up there. So, those are three big things that I'm excited about.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you. It's great to see a full room. Many times, we have our meetings, and this room is almost empty. So, I don't really know what that means. But it's nice to have a full boardroom. A year ago, we all came through a campaign where I think the recurring theme that we heard on the streets of the city of Frederick was quality of life, was maintaining the quality of life that we all enjoy, whether we're here as residents, or we operate a business, or we're visiting. And I think that's really the number-one task that we have ahead of us as elected officials at the local level, whether it's public safety in streets, our police department, effective and efficient delivery of services, from trash collection to snow removal. I would concur with the Mayor, the less of that snow removal we have to do, the better for all of us. The things that we've spent some time focusing on and continue to be issues, I know, is the long-term development potential for both the west side of Frederick and the east side. We've looked at various ways in which we can try and accomplish those, through small-area plans, the efforts of East Frederick Rising. One of the common issues in the campaign last year, and it continues to be something because it's just not an easy issue to tackle, is how do we recover the vacant properties in the community and get them to reach full productivity? What we want is every property in the city of Frederick to be at its highest and best use. And that's dependent on a lot of factors, and sometimes buildings are owned by not very good landlords. And we have to acknowledge that that's part of the problem. Sometimes, our policies don't make it easy for people to recover a vacant or a blighted property and put it back into production. We need to look at that. Alderman Bokey is not here. If he was, he would certainly talk about the Business Development Advisory Council and the efforts that we're trying to make to look at everything that we do as a city of Frederick and try and figure out how we can be more productive, particularly in our dealings with the business community. And for me, one of the issues that we've talked about more recently involves the Harget Farm. And one of the things that I would like to see the city develop is a kind of long-range Parks and Recreation Master Plan, something that's more than just a facility plan, but something that actually looks at the recreation facilities we need in the city of Frederick, the ones we want in the city of Frederick, and how to begin to plan for those, so that when the good ideas come to us about doing whatever it might be, aquatics, indoor track, we've got a thought already about where those should be located. And the process that we would go through, say, yes, we have thought about that, and we believe the right location for that is on this piece of land which we own, or in this development which we know is coming. So, those are some things that I know that we've talked about, and I think are important to maintaining, again, that strong quality of life that we have in the city.
Good morning, Donna Kazemchak. I think quality of life is a theme up here. I don't think that there is one person sitting up here that doesn't care about the quality of life in the city. And that quality of life includes everything. We need to make sure that our policies and procedures make it easier for a business to be here. At the same time, we want to make sure that we have people moving here because of the quality of life. So, having good parks and good roads and good police, good code enforcement, those are all things that can help businesses. Those are all things that can help businesses thrive. And that is what we need to do. We need to make sure that we take care of all of those things. Although, I love the idea of this master plan, not just for parks, but I think every department should have a master plan. And I think that that's something that I don't see. As many of you know, I was in office for three years, I was for three terms, 12 years. I was out of office for four years, and I've come back. Sometimes, I say, the more things change, the more they stay the same. Other times, they truly do change, and I'm hoping that I'm seeing a change in the attitude of the people who are sitting on this side of the dais. I'm hoping that we're seeing people who are willing to cooperate with one another and with the business community, even when we disagree, to move forward and get things done. And if something's not in place, we work to get it in place, to make it better for everybody in the city.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Phil Dacey. I'm new to the Board of Aldermen, and I just have to say, it's an exciting time to be part of the Board of Aldermen. It's exciting to be joining the Board of Aldermen at this time, because Frederick has so much going on. I think we've got a lot of big things that are happening, and I'm excited to see the progress of those over the next year. You're talking about the hotel, starting off with the hotel. Hopefully, we'll make some progress with the downtown hotel, which this morning, I was talking with Richard Griffin, and I think everybody believes it will be a game changer for the downtown. I'd like to see some progress on that, and I'm excited about that. The airport expansion, hopefully, that will help the business community, within Frederick, and developing new businesses that will come into Frederick. Monocacy Boulevard expansion, the Connolly Farm, the VFW Golf Course, the Bowman Farm. We're going to see progress on all of these projects over the next year. And like I say, it's an exciting time to be able to help shape the community of Frederick. We've got Route 40 development that's coming with the new Walmart, and even the Harget Farm on Route 40. Hopefully, we'll see some progress there over the next year. And I'm excited to hear what the Business Advisory Council comes up with, and look forward to hearing your concerns and your issues in Frederick, and look forward to working with you. Thank you.
Well, thank you. The city of Frederick operates under a charter form of government. I know all the talk around the community is the county moving into a charter form of government. Do you see the city and the county's relationship changing in any way because of the charter form of government? Or do you have any suggestions or any pitfalls that our elected, our upcoming elected officials might face with this new form?
I'm excited about the prospect of two of the council members largely being city representatives in a way. Because of the way the districts were drawn, Districts Three and Four will largely be made up of municipal residents. And I think the idea that there's a kind of guarantee for the city of Frederick, that we're going to have representation on the county council, I think is good from the perspective of us looking at where those areas of connection and collaboration exist between the city and county. Many people don't know this, and so, it's one of my soapboxes. City and county government, as far as state law is concerned, are viewed as equivalent political entities. We're not subservient to them. We have our charter, they have their charter. And so, it's really important in that environment to make sure that you have a good collaborative working relationship between the county and the city, because while we may be separate political entities identified as equals in the state constitution, clearly, there are things that the county does that we don't do, and schools being the most obvious example of that. And there are clearly things that the city does that the county doesn't. Operate our own full-service police department at a more intense level than they do at the county. The Sheriff's Office and the city police department are equivalent, but we have our own police force, and so, we don't have to rely, to the same extent, on the patrol aspects of what the Sheriff's Office provides. So, I think that collaboration is going to be important, and I look forward to what that dynamic is going to look like under a charter government.
I don't think there's any way you can possibly think that they wouldn't change. It's all about relationships. And what I see is not just the two who will represent the city individually, but really, that doesn't get us too far, because that would be like one of us sitting up here and wanting something and the rest of us not. Hopefully, the two at-large members will also be, understand completely how the city affects the county, how the city goes, the county goes. And hopefully, we will have a relationship with the county executive that allows them to understand that we, as a city, really, really are important in Frederick. And we can't be ignored. And I feel that for years and years and years, Frederick, city, citizens, and businesses have been ignored. You pay the same amount of taxes to the county, yet that, the difference that you get back from the county for services provided by the city are not nearly enough. I think that we need to continue to tweak that policy. The last administration, I think, did that some. I don't think it went quite the direction that they were hoping, but at least it was a try. And I'm always for trying something new if we think it's going to work. But it's a lot of staff working with staff, and those are relationships that we need to continue to make sure thrive, as Alderman O'Connor said. We need them to thrive. And if the city staff does not believe something is working because of county, then they need to tell the elected officials, and we need to work together to make that better. I know there are a number of candidates in the audience today. I see a number of them nodding their heads. Truly, it's all about relationships, and we need to make those relationships better.
Yeah, well, I would agree with everything my colleagues have said. And I think it's going to be interesting. Nobody knows how it's all going to play out. But I think what I would like to see us do is set up some kind of framework very early on to ensure that we are meeting on a regular basis and discussing things on a regular basis with our counterparts in the county. You know, perhaps, you know, quarterly, we would have a joint meeting. There currently is a process where all of the municipalities in Frederick County meet with Frederick County government. But I think we have challenges here in the city of Frederick, because we're a larger city, that are unique to us. And it would be a great opportunity to have the county council all to ourselves for a couple of hours, to just sort of, you know, make sure that we're all on the right track. In terms of staff, you're absolutely right. Staff has always worked really well together. They are the continuity that is the government. They are the ones that get the work done. We're up here, the faces of it. But really, behind the scenes, the staff are the ones that make things happen. And our staffs have always had great working relationships, and I have no doubt that that will continue. So, we're all pretty excited for the future, what it will hold, new ground.
I just echo what everybody else said. I think there certainly will be a lot of opportunities, regardless of the form of government, for the county to work with the city over the next four years. We've got a lot of regional plans, whether it's schools or aquatic center, the regional park, and Harget. Hopefully, the county will continue to partner with the city and to try and move the region forward. So, it's more of a regional perspective. When people say Frederick, sometimes they mean Frederick City, sometimes they mean Frederick County. But I think to citizens of Frederick County or Frederick City, it's more of a regional perspective that we need to bring. So, hopefully, we continue to work well with the county to move some of these projects forward, you know, so that they're not just city projects, and they're city, county, and regional projects.
Terrific. Well, thank you. I know a really important part of this gathering is to hear from the audience. We do have a microphone, and if anybody would care to ask a question, I see John does, we'll get a microphone over to you. Thanks.
We're recording this, so everybody can have an opportunity to see it again.
For posterity.
How you doing? I'm John Bailey. I'm the President of Wood Street. We're located in downtown. I also live downtown. And as many of you know, I'm also a pain. But I have really two questions in 37 parts. I'm kidding. No. One question is, you mentioned the vacant properties. You also mentioned the downtown hotel and conference center. I think that went really well, and I think that was an example of how well, when the Chamber has an initiative, they bring together, I know they brought together the Med Group, major employers' group. So, it was a very collaborative partnership to make that happen, and I think that was a really good example of how to identify a need and fill that need. And I think we can do the same thing with the vacant properties. You know, Google Earth just updated their satellite images, and if you do a satellite view of some of the vacant properties in Frederick, some of them have huge holes, big enough for zombies to fall through. And so, I think our vacant properties, some of the ones down by my office on East Patrick Street, owned by Douglas Development, obviously, the Carmack Jays building. I live north of the hospital, and in the streets was a shining example of what happens right around Third Street. Everything just sort of falls apart. And it's a real shame, because there's a lot of cool things on the north end of town. We hear about East End rising. But I'd like to hear some people talk about how to expand that out. And then, my second question is really inspired by your little doohickey there. I'd love to hear anybody's ideas or thoughts on providing recycling services to businesses in the city.
Thanks. Let me take a, I can give it to Lauren there. Thank you. I'll take a little shot at one of the things you said about the activities, as we call it, north of Fourth, pretty much how it dies down. One of the challenges that we have is what's there? And what's there changes drastically after Fourth Street. And what I mean by that is, from, you know, All Saints to Fourth Street, you have a combination of residents upstairs and business downstairs. But once you hit Fourth Street, that changes. It flips to all residences mostly. So, you've got the dynamic of having people who live, or the owners of that building having as residents on the lower section. And by virtue, and we've talked about this a long time at tourism, is you get there and you go, oh, I'm now in the residential part of town, let me turn around and come back. And you're right, at about Sixth Street, all of a sudden, that flips back to the other direction. Things like In the Street are a help, because the idea is to try to draw visitors, residents, all the way up and down. You know, it was one of the big concerns that I had back when I was on the Board for, in the street, was we sort of died out, because people said, well, no one will get up there. I said, well, no, we want to keep pushing it. We've got to find the right thing to draw people up there, so they see what's going on. But we still have that problem. I mean, no matter what, we can draw people up there. We have that problem of how do we get our visitors and people who want to enjoy business to keep going up there? And I don't mean to point them out, but I see Ron Kramer standing in the back. You know, we've got Habitat for Humanity, who's, has an initiative of trying to upgrade, spruce up, help those residents move forward. So, it doesn't look uninviting, even from a residential aspect. So, it's like, maybe the idea is, once you hit that Fourth Street, it's, oh, wow, look at the neat architecture, look at how great these homes, and keep moving. If they can get them moving a little bit further, they go, oh, wait a minute, look, there's another business up here, you know? And then, it really does depend, to be honest with you, it's marketing, marketing, marketing. All of you know, or maybe not, my wife and I had a business downtown for 12 years. She's an accountant by trade. It was everything I had to pull money out of her pocket to do advertising, you know? But, yeah, those up there have the tougher problem of making sure they're marketing to let everybody know, keep coming, you know? We are up here. You know, our end is to try to make it as, in my opinion, as aesthetically pleasing, and force people, and find ways, such as events, that we can draw people up into that area.
There's a lot of stuff going on in the Uptown area. There is a newsletter that's being put out by folks up there, the Uptown Coalition. They put out a monthly newsletter about activities and things that are going on up in that neighborhood. There's a redevelopment of the Seventh Street Fountain project that is going to be discussed at a workshop here coming up soon. The Downtown Frederick Partnership is working with some folks to enhance that little Seventh Street Fountain and Park area to make it more enticing. We've got two murals, one to be unveiled on Sunday, beautiful pieces of artwork up there. The Bernard Brown Community Center is up there. The Restor has been a great draw. So, there are things happening. There are people now starting to gel as a group and want to make that area much more enticing, and it's starting to happen. Part of the problem is the Carmack Jays building, not only because it's empty, but because of the way that it's constructed away from the street frontage. When you're walking up the street and you see a gap where the parking lot is, you think, that's the end. And so, you just don't go any further. So, whatever happens with that building, we have to make sure that there's something at street front that keeps that continuity going, that keeps people, and draws them up the street. So, it is exciting, though, to see the neighborhood up there getting together. Habitat has been doing the beautification project up there, and it's starting to happen. And as long as we can sort of get, catch the wave and go with them and help, I think there are great things happening.
I think that the question of the north end of town is much the same as the question of the east end of town, and the west end of town, and the south end of town. The city center will only go so far, and that's driven by foot traffic. Everybody knows that you have to have people to make a business work. And, you know, unfortunately, I was the Realtor for a couple who started a business on, in the third block before Carmack Jay. And they didn't last, they lasted just over a year, because there simply is not the foot traffic in that area to draw people. So, although I understand that we, as a city, our job is to make it easier for a business to start and help a business in any way we can, it's really, in my opinion, the residents and the businesses' jobs to get the people there, to pull people in. Cafe 611, I think, is a great example. They were doing okay, then they weren't doing so well, now they're doing great. It's all about, it's all about switching your plan to get more people. And we have an entire Department of Economic Development, who are, I'm sure, more than happy to talk to any business owner in the town. And also, as Aldermen, I know that we're happy to come out, walk the street with you, see if there are things that we can find that are issues, and help take care of those. I do believe that vacant buildings are an issue, but I remember when Carmack Jays was to sorrows, and it was falling down. So, I would much prefer to have that empty but nice and shiny building than what was there before that. The two buildings in front of it, I see no excuse for the way they still remain. Then, we talk about, you know, the same thing needs to happen in the east end, which I believe is going to happen with some development over there. And then, of course, you have the west end.
Golden Mile.
Thank you, the Golden Mile Alliance, that's working there. Unfortunately, I noticed that they've got some money in their coffers, and I'm a little concerned with the way they are considering spending it. I see what Downtown Frederick Partnership did by hiring a full-time executive director. I think that that is a brilliant move, and I hope to see other groups go that way. As we talk about the recycling issue, I think everybody up here also is very, very interested in, you know, recycling. We've talked about all kinds of ways to help. Of course, all of those ways cost money. And right now, we are just looking for the money in any way we can. Hopefully, with the new type of county government, we can expect some partnerships with them as we move forward with this. But recycling is one of those issues, businesses and residents, that I would like to see come as a group effort, not a city thing, not a county thing, but a group effort.
Yeah, I think we all just had a workshop on recycling, and I think we all need to make sure we do a good job about, or a better job of letting people know that recycling is important, it saves the city money. Right now, the recycling rate is just over, what, 50%? Is that what we said in the workshop? So, 51%? So, 51% of people are putting their cans out right now. So, that means 49% of people are not taking full advantage of recycling. So, you know, we- So, you know, we need to do a better job about making sure people understand the importance of recycling. So, and I know there are some people that do it very well religiously and then there's other people that it's not as important to. But it is important to the city and it's an important priority. And so I think that's one thing, one of our jobs can be making sure people understand that recycling helps everything, you know, the city, the environment. And as far as the north side goes, I agree, it's an issue. I think some of the vacant properties there are definitely an issue to the development. I think it's great to see that Uptown newsletter because I think organizing is an important step for the northern group. I mean, you see what happened with Downtown Frederick Partnership when they started organizing, businesses started organizing. And I've talked to some groups on Patrick Street and on East Patrick Street and they're starting to talk about organizing to get some people, get more traffic, I guess, on the East Patrick Street. And I think all these redevelopment projects will help increase the foot traffic. I mean, it has been an issue in certain sections of the city. It's just a matter of trying to get people to understand the city goes beyond, you know, the Market Street. And the same issue on the creek with making sure we understand people have, help tourists understand that, you know, that there is a lot that the creek has to offer as well. So hopefully, all these redevelopment projects will bring more people and every, a rising tide lifts all boats, so hopefully, you know, the northern end will benefit from that as well.
John, you'd asked about expanded commercial recycling in downtown. Are you speaking about a specific area that doesn't have it? That you're specifically interested in? Because we have a downtown commercial recycling program for businesses located within a certain corridors, but...
I believe that I'm...
Just outside the corridor. Let's have a conversation about that. Because if the opportunity is there for us to expand it and it makes sense because it's adjacent to an existing route, I'm not adverse to having that conversation.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Perfect. I had a question for you regarding, I was driving in this morning, went past all the construction equipment out on Carroll Creek. And I know we're in the next phase of development and that's really, truly a public-private partnership. Other than the hotel project, do any of you have any thoughts you want to share about other development that's going on along there or what you hope to see?
One of the things that was discussed in the 60th administration in trying to find the money to do Phase Two was the economic return on investment that that project would bring. We noticed even right after the vote was made to allocate those funds, things started to happen, which was good. Now that there's actually bulldozers out there, it's even more. You know, we're hearing a lot of things. I try to keep in touch regularly with Bob McCutcheon. He's trying to move forward with his project of expanding McCutcheon's on the creek. We've been in touch with the owner of the warehouse that's on the opposite side of McCutcheon's and they are working hard to have a potential client to take some of that space and they're working hard to finalize that. We also have heard, the Ren Farm has moved forward in attempts to make that final connection, which will open a large area of opportunity towards the other end of that creek. And all of that sort of congeals with the vision plan of East Frederick Rising, which was that area of the city is one of the biggest opportunities we have moving forward from a business aspect. So again, when we talk about partnerships, it's what we can put up to help move forward those projects from an actual construction aspect. We've been very, very pleased with our partner, Waynesboro Construction. They are moving forward and finding very, very unique things to make it better and save us dollars. I won't, Zach can tell me if I speak out of turn, but one of the things I hope everybody noticed out there, if you hit the Della Plain, they're working on the part of the linear park that goes to East Street. And right now, it went down a little hole, came up again, the idea is to make that level. Well, one of the things they came up with is, you know, everybody's put a bunch of dirt in there, compact it, make the thing level. Well, they came up with this idea of using styrofoam as a base filler. It has a better compaction rate, it's lighter. We have to remember, we have these large conduits underneath, which is what the creek is really for, which is to make sure the water flows through our town. The difference in cost of that was a tremendous savings, about a hundred and some thousand dollars savings to do that. So that's another thing about what we like with our business partners is they're looking out for ways to make it better when it long-term saves us money, so, and have a great end product.
And being that styrofoam is not recyclable, maybe we can have a hole where everybody can just drop their cups as you go down.
Hmm. I did want to mention on the, if you go in the opposite direction on Carroll Creek, towards Baker Park and towards Schiffer Stat, we do have a project that is on line to be constructed next year and that is an undercrossing that will take the shared use path that terminates at Schiffer Stat Museum underneath the ramps onto Route 15 and will come out the other side at Waterford Park, which then takes the trail out to Bachman's Lane and continues all the way out to the Home Depot. So when that undercrossing is constructed next year, it will open up a route of transportation between the east and west sides that are segregated by Route 15. You'll be able to go from Downtown Frederick all the way out to the west side and back without ever having to ride on the road. And I'm really excited about the opportunities that that's going to bring.
The challenge often it seems to me is the appropriate public investment leveraged against whatever that private investment is going to be. Oftentimes in government, it comes as a response. We have to react to something that's happening and expand a road or put in an interchange or whatever it might be because the growth is there, we now need to accommodate it. I think Carroll Creek is a good example of that public investment coming on the front side. We make the investment on the front side of this project knowing, and we have the track record to prove it, it's the stretch that's already been completed in terms of the hardscape. Say what you will about the architecture, any of those kinds of things, like, don't like, I'm not talking about an aesthetic piece, I'm talking about the investment that has been made, the private investment that's come in that section. And we don't have any reason to believe that when we complete the next section of Carroll Creek, that the same kind of private investment won't follow that public investment as well. And I think that's what the importance of these projects are to the city of Frederick.
I think that there are also some projects that have been going on for years and years and years, and it's nice to see them finally coming to fruition. I mean, Carroll Creek was the vision of Ron Young, who has not been in city office for many, many years. And it's difficult to see that stop, start, stop, start, stop, start. And it seems to be continually moving now, although very, very slowly. Starting this new section is very exciting for me because I do think that that is going to add a lot to downtown. The Ren Farm, I think, is going to add some foot traffic. I'm a little concerned about the View Shed and I want to make sure that we cover that. I think we also need to consider, the hotel, I think, will be a great boon for downtown. But let's all still remember, this is a historic city. And part of the reason this city continues to thrive when others have not is because we have protected the historic part of this city. And we talk about the economics of a historic district again and again and again, so let's not forget that it's there. Let's not forget the parts of this city that really do bring people here. So as we expand, let's not forget, there's an expansion. I have said it and I will, as my colleagues know, beat this drum until I die. I believe the Harget property on the west side of the city can be a huge economic boon to that part of town. I believe making that a park, making that a regional park where there can be tournaments and people coming, tourists coming and spending their dollars here and then going home so we don't have to pay for their services is the best of all worlds. And, you know, that is something that I think that we continue to, I don't want to say ignore because we're talking about it, but I don't think that it's as important to some as it is to others. And I think that it should be important for the west side of town.
Perfect. We do have time for a couple more questions, sir. Here's a microphone coming.
Hi, my name is Tom Meacham. I've been a resident of Frederick for a long time and have a business here, live and work in the city. Just a, kind of a quick perception of over the years. In the early 80s, I remember applying for a permit to build a building out on Route 40 and I submitted a piece of paper with a pencil drawing of the addition and it was relatively easy to take care of then. Around the year 2000, wanted to build a building out on North Market Street and the process had changed dramatically. But I still found the city and the people here remarkably helpful and seemingly wanted me to be able to do this. It was the kind of building and the kind of area they wanted and so it was, there were really no issues other than just getting through the process. And I felt the city was helpful at that time. Around '07, I wanted to try a project and went through the same process again and things had dramatically changed the city. The process seemed to be much more odious and conflictual and it seemed like I was having to prove everything to the city in order to get something done that basically was the same kind of thing that they said they wanted. People all said, well, this is the kind of use and construction we want, but you're going to have to go through this process. And the process had changed to the point where it was a big pain in the ass. Now, I'm now going through it yet again and the '07 project we didn't do because the recession kind of hit and we didn't do it, and now we've made some modifications to it and I'm having to go through the process again. But just to give you a small idea of the issue, we were approved in '07 and got the approval done and we're making some modifications to it, but just enough modifications that we have to start all over. Our use is actually less than the approved one, yet we're having to go through the process all over again. When I asked some people in Planning and zoning about that, they said, well, I know, there's really no issues here, but it just wouldn't be fair if we didn't make you go through the process like everybody else. It was kind of like, they were more interested in the process than they were the end result, that I should have to suffer like everyone else even though my project was really simple and there were no issues. We made application in July by the, whatever the deadline was, the 15th of July, for the next planning mission, you know, meeting. I thought, well, that'd be the next month. No. My July application, the next planning meeting is in November. And so we can't even move forward if we go to that meeting, which in case they'll just sort of rubber stamp it anyway because it really is a very non-conventional thing. So in summation, my issue is that it seems like we've allowed our bureaucracy and our systems to take over. We say we don't want that to happen, we say we want to make it easier, we say we want to be helpful and supportive to businesses, especially particularly small businesses, yet we've allowed our system to take us over and make it much more difficult than we say we want, but we don't do anything about it.
Thanks, Tom. You bring up a point that has been brought up in other situations. One of the things that I'd like to say is, every application is different. For, you know, I've had this conversation about your project and my attempt was to see what we can do to help. And I think that from what I can understand in your situation, we helped to where we could. Understand your concern about what planning may have said, if that's the case, then that's something I need to look at. But I don't want that to be a broad representation of what happens. I get, and I'm sure our, my fellow electors up here will also say, we get a very high number of people who have said, you know, I came through the system, I was concerned about it and it went very well. And I can say that might be, planting a tree is going to be a lot easier than planting a light hole. Can't say that 100% of the time, we're going to be absolutely positively right on the button. Our job has been and will continue to be to make sure that the process is, as Alderman Konzeck said, as fluent as possible and easy as possible. But from, I think you made a good point, from the time you started back in 2000 or whatever and to the point you got now, rules change. Rules change because codes change. Codes that we are required to follow from above change. What makes it harder, more reviews, more things that you have to go through. And that slows the process down and that makes people who have been here for a long time, our long-established businesses, going, wait a minute, it didn't happen in 1999 this way, in 2014 and I'm really up against a wall and why? With all due respect, it's because we're forced to make sure that certain codes, rules and forms are adhered to, which adds to that process. And we don't like that. We've done our best in reference to, not our best, always have tried to find ways to do the one-stop shop forward. That's Tuesdays from seven to one, eleven? Where you come in and we walk the system through with you. So you have as much predictability as possible. And I've heard great reviews and reviews about that, that it's, that people would really like to have more of that. We used to have it twice a week. Because of dollars, we have not been able to do that yet, but the time we have it, people are happy with it. So I don't discount, and I don't want to make it sound like your problem isn't real and it's not, it is, there's a concern and I'm going to find a way to address it. But I also don't want to portray that that's happening all over the place and it's really hard. There will be times where it's not going to work. My goal is to make sure that it's more on the other side as much as possible.
I'll just add something, I guess, from the perspective of sitting on the Planning Commission, that we, the processes that we have in place and the procedures, at times I will say, they do seem rather copious. And there are, I mean, the Land Management Code is very thick, so there's a lot of things. But processes are put in place to protect all of us, to protect the builder, protect the residents, protect the businesses, protect the city government and protect the taxpayers. And unfortunately, we are in a season of litigiousness. We have several Planning Commission cases that have been bounced back and forth from, you know, appeal to appeal and in court. And so the Planning Commission, the planning staff have to make sure that they follow processes so that if there is a suit, we can make our case and we can stand on our decisions in court. So, you know, while it may seem to tweak a small project, that it seems like a lot, if we don't follow our processes, then we open ourselves up to issues, which we try to avoid because those are, use of taxpayer dollars that we would rather divert towards something more positive. And I'll just say, in terms of getting a case in front of the Planning Commission, we're meeting twice in October because we have such heavy caseloads. So from my perspective, that's a good sign. It's a good sign that we are so busy, that we have so many cases coming forward, that we have so much development happening, that the economy is picking up, that things are happening here. So that's, I guess, a perspective that I wanted to share. But things are, things are looking really good.
There hasn't been any question since the Land Management Code was adopted in the mid-2000s, that it's a voluminous document. Unintentionally, I think, they create some apparent conflicts. And each time those things emerge, as the staff goes through a project and brings it forward and finds those conflicts, they bring the change to us to modify the Land Management Code to correct those kinds of deficiencies. There have been efforts, at least two I want to say, since its adoption, to put committees of people together to do the kind of comprehensive review that's necessary to maybe make those kinds of changes happen in a wholesale fashion. It's frankly been difficult to get people to want to volunteer their time to commit to a process that's really time-consuming. But much like the recycling question from earlier, I'm certainly not opposed to changing that document in any way that's necessary in order to make the process move more predictably and more smoothly. The challenge that we face is, how do we bring those changes through a process? How do we get the kind of review that's necessary to identify where those deficiencies are and move them forward? Our staff is, I don't say this as an excuse, but it is a reason, our staff, as Alderman Russell indicated, is busy trying to move projects forward that are coming in, that oftentimes the technical side of the process, the looking at the regulation and the trying to rewrite the governing document, I wouldn't expect it to be on the front burner, that takes the backseat in that process. So if there's a way to sort of move that review and continue to have that kind of refinement be an ongoing part of not just our Land Management Code, frankly, every regulation that we put in place in the city of Frederick, there ought to be a process to do periodic and reviews to make sure that when we put the rule in place in the first place, are we getting...
getting the outcomes that we were expecting? And it's, I don't imagine the way you sell cars is the same that it was in 1980 today. Maybe it's mostly the same, but I, I suspect it's changed. Cars have gotten more complicated, government has gotten more complicated. I don't necessarily say it's a, it hasn't always gotten better. But I, I think our job on both sides is to figure out, how do we accommodate those changes in a way that, that creates the, the most effective process that we can? So, I mean, the mayor, the mayor's indicated he's going to look more closely at the, your particular circumstances, and all these things are anecdotal. We can talk about a crime rate, for example, but if crime is happening to you, you don't really care what the crime rate is. We can talk about a process that we think is efficient on our end, but if you're the one that's going through it and it's not efficient from your perspective, we have to deal with you. We have to deal with that. We can't talk about generalities when it comes down to specific cases.
Terrific. Let's see, it's almost five of nine. Do you all have time, maybe, for one more quick question? If we have one more question?
We don't care about the meters.
Yes, Mr. Goldstein, you'll need the microphone.
I'll make this brief. I'm Frank Goldstein. I'm a fairly new resident. I've been here three years. As far as the business community is concerned, I think we all know that one of the important relationships is with the education community. And the General Assembly last session passed legislation to permit graduate programs to be offered in Frederick County that are not otherwise offered by Hood or Mount St. Mary's. And I'm wondering if the City of Frederick has considered what, if any, role it may have in attracting those types of opportunities here.
I would like to note that when I first took office, I requested that the Education Commission be put back, back together in a different format than it was before. That was declined, and it's something that I hope to, to push again. I think the education of our residents and the education of, of city residents is of utmost importance because if we don't educate people properly, they can't work for you. It's just that simple. We need people who know what they're doing to go to, well, to get through high school, and many of them during high school, they're taking college classes, and then even post, post-high school, whether it's a, a generalized field that they want to learn more about or a college degree that they want to, to get, or higher education, which is something that I personally am very interested in, in getting. But I, I think that as a city, we ignore that. As a city, the answers tend to be, that's the county's job. That's the county's job. And when the new group takes office, what I would like to see is for the county to say, "Okay, city, you've been doing these things, and we realize that they've really kind of been our job too. And by the way, would you help us?" Because education is really important. There are other cities in this nation who have put together ways that every one of their graduates within their city could go to a post-high school graduate education. And there are ways for us to do that. We would have to have somebody who is willing to look into it and to write grants. We've got to have somebody writing grants for the city, and we don't have that yet. So the answer in my particular case is yes. I'm very, very interested, and I hope at some point my colleagues see how important it is for the city to stop throwing the, "Well, that's the county's job. Education is the county's job," and start helping with it, with the caveat that the county start pulling its weight for city residents too, because honestly, they haven't been.
I'll just say, in terms of the particular project that you're talking about, Carol Krim, who was an alderman in a previous term, worked very closely with our state delegation, and there were several meetings to discuss the opportunities to have that higher education. And we would love to have it located in the City of Frederick, so I'm hoping that those conversations will continue. But it is, it is something that we've been involved with and are aware of, so it's a, it's a good question. And I'm curious, too, to see where we might be with that and how we can help move it forward.
Terrific. Well, if, if nobody else has anything else to offer on that, I would like to give my heartfelt thanks to the chamber staff and the wonderful City of Frederick staff for helping get this morning together. I'd like to thank Mr. Goldstein, Mr. Meacham, and Mr. Bailey for your thought-provoking questions. I'd like to thank our elected officials for sharing your thoughts with us today, and especially, I'd like to thank all of you all for such a great, wonderful turnout. And I hope to do a lot more of this, and so thank you for your time, and I hope you all have a great day.
Thank you.
Thank you.